Calling to order the committee of the whole meeting for Diamond Lake School District 76. Roll call, please. Here. He is joining virtually, but I don't think he's joined yet. Okay, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your very public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we now open the floor for public comments on agenda items. Do we have any public comments this evening? If you are joining us virtually, please feel free to type those public comments into the chat and we will read them into the meeting for you. Just wait a second for that. Okay, it does not look like we have any public comments. We're now going to appoint a secretary pro tempore. Just to give everyone a little bit of background, I think everyone knows this, but Margaret Quine moved out of the district and so she had to resign her board position, which means that we will be looking to fill that position. Thank you. And also, since she was serving as our board secretary, we are going to appoint someone in the interim and then later in today's meeting, we will elect a new secretary. So currently, I'm going to appoint Lisa Bishop to the secretary pro tempore for this meeting tonight. And now we are going to move on to presentations.
All right, we have two presentations this evening. And for our first presentation, I'm going to hand the floor over to Mr. Cunningham, who is going to give an overview of our Illinois Horizon Schools to Watch Award and recognition, and then invite our two guests presenters here tonight.
Thank you very much. We're very honored to have two esteemed guests with us tonight. We, this is, as you guys know, the board knows at this point, we received the Illinois Horizon Schools to Watch and National Forum Schools to Watch Award this past year. And we just wanted to recap briefly what exactly that means, other than we've been certified that we're awesome. Really, what you have to be ranked, it is considered high implementation averaging in four major areas, and those are academic excellence, developmental responsiveness, social equity, and organizational structures and processes. So just. I'm so sorry. There they are, the four things. So schools that we, really, we took this very seriously as a school, and the schools that do apply, take this very seriously. We took this rubric and our team felt that we were ready to apply. And so we had a big writing team take this on. It's about a 50-page application and we had a site visit. Actually, both the gentlemen here were a part of our site visit team. We had some board members on that as well. And so after that, we received a very strong, comprehensive write-up that we've used, actually, in our school improvement planning again for this year, based on our suggestions, extremely valuable. And we were selected as the school to watch. You know, I wish the board could have seen we presented this to the staff. It was an incredible, we had, there are tears everywhere. There was people like sharing 25 years of stories. It was an incredible moment. And I know for our teacher community, and we celebrated with our whole school, we had that great photo of everybody, everybody in the shirts. And our students are still, I just saw like somebody walking around with them the other day in town. It's just phenomenal to see that. And then we were able to go to Washington DC this past summer. And I don't know, yeah. So we went to DC this past summer, which was really an honor. You can see there's some different shots, some action shots on a couple of slides there of us receiving the award. Both Mr. Peterson and I spoke a couple of different sessions. And what was really amazing was seeing the types of districts that, the type of schools that were there. These are a lot of, I mean, we had, there was, it was probably a thousand people at this conference. And these are districts that were just loved what they do. They're humble, a lot of them working with such few resources, doing such incredible things. It was really very humbling to be around on this group of educators. It was humbling even to bring around the teachers, be able to bring to this conference. So we were able to accept that award, which brings us today because as we got that National Forum Award, the Illinois Horizon Award, we have an opportunity to accept in person. And because really, the school board is the reason we're able to even go for this and be a part of that conference, we want to invite our outgoing executive director, Mr. John Viano up, and our incoming executive director of the Illinois Association of, Association of Illinois Middle Schools, Ames, to come up and talk about this. So thank you, guys.
Thanks, Peter. I am the outgoing, I guess you'd say, executive director of the Association of Illinois Middle Grade Schools, but I remain the co-director of the Illinois Horizon Schools to Watch Project in the state of Illinois. My name is John Viano and I've been with Ames for the past 11 years. Before that, I was retired administrator in South Suburban Tinley Park and Orland Park and a teacher for 40 years. So I guess you can say I've been around the block a few years in the educational field. Jim Parker is the incoming executive director of the Association of Middle Grade Schools. And I think he really brings an important perspective, not only to Ames, but also to schools to watch. Jim was a principal at two schools in two different Chicago suburban locations that were designated as Horizon Schools. And Jim, maybe if you don't mind, if you just indicate how that made a difference in your particular facility or during both of your designations.
Thank you, John, for the kind words. I appreciate that. Jim Parker, formerly building principal at Stevenson Middle School in Melrose Park, Illinois, also Jack London Middle School in Wheeling. I had an opportunity to teach a couple of years at Fremont. So we came over here as a volleyball coach and played you guys just down the hallway a couple of times. That's like 27 years ago. So my first year of retirement, and I'm really inspired, Peter, by your presentation here and the photos that you showed of your staff and of the group coming together. And that, I think, John, was one of the main things from my, my schools was the, we were able to rally around a cause and get our teachers involved, get our teachers buying into doing good things for kids. And Peter said more eloquently, the four areas, and I kind of summed it up there in terms of doing the right thing, doing good kid, things for kids. The middle school child is a little bit different, right? The frontal lobe's not quite developed yet. When you ask them, why'd you do that? And they say, I don't know. I genuinely don't know. They make some bad decisions sometimes, and they count on people like you, adults like you, to be there to support them. So we're pleased to have West Oak on board as an Illinois Horizon School. I challenge you to think of it more as a recognition than an award. And it's something that we redesignate every three years. So it's not something you put up the plaque and you're done. It's something now we challenge you. We challenge you with a stretch goal. The recognition means, wow, good things are happening here in those four areas. The stretch goal challenges you, challenges admin, challenges the teachers. What, what area? Let's identify one area where we can do a little bit more for a stretch goal. Then we come back in three years and take another look at the school and see if it's so worthy of the redesignation. So that's the process we're looking forward to. We look forward to seeing you along that journey.
Thanks, Jim. One of the other things I might say about being a school to watch or a Horizon School to watch in Illinois is the fact that in this state, there are 30 other schools that have received this designation, nationally around 500. So you're in some pretty good company. I would also add that this time of the year and at this particular point in our history, I guess, this designation is especially important because one of the things that the Schools to Watch movement has always emphasized is the supports, the developmental responsiveness piece, the social emotional supports that we know middle-level kids need, maybe now more than ever before. And I think it's become especially timely and especially important for schools to recognize the need for this particular part of education and to meet the needs of students, not only in terms of academics, but also in so many of the other supports and needs that they have, not only in school but out of school, and bring their families and the community into the schools and provide people with the opportunities to make it through a very difficult and challenging time. And I think your school was one that we noted right away that had done a beautiful job in that area. I commend you for it. And as Jim said, the big challenge is the next three years, sustaining it. And I have every confidence that you will indeed do so. I also want to say one other thing about your district and about West Oak Middle School. As the outgoing executive director of Ames, I'm especially proud and grateful for your support. Not only your attendance at the National Schools to Watch Conference in Washington, DC, but the fact that you made presentations and breakout sessions to other practitioners around, from around the country, but also the fact that you're an active member of the organization, not only in terms of your membership, but and also in your participation in our events and activities. Believe me, that means a lot to me. That means a lot to the organization. It means a lot to the middle-level community. You have a lot to add, and I hope that you'll continue to be a vital part of our organization. So with that said, I want to present a plaque to whoever wants to accept it here. I would vote, but. Mr. Cunningham, Mr. Peterson will be here. You received some hardware in DC and hopefully you've received that already. But on behalf of the Association of Illinois Middle Grade Schools, we want to give you, present this plaque to you in honor of your designation as a Horizon School to Watch. And again, thanking you for your continued support and looking forward to your sustaining the School to Watch initiative and becoming a vital part of our organization for years to come. Thank you.
Mr. Hanson, I'm sure is going to take a picture outside. Oh, yes, absolutely.
That's not why it's here. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, nicely done, West Oak Middle School. And now our second presentation this evening is a continuation from last July or the last board meeting. Unfortunately, Ms. Carrera wasn't able to attend, but she is prepared and updated her presentation for this meeting. And it's just a year in review and update and all the accomplishments that she achieved with, along with the community liaison department and the supports from all the school and the staff and the community and her goals for next year. So take it away, Ms. Carrera.
Thank you. Okay. So starting off, so just wanted to start off saying thank you to the board for all of your support for this position. I know some of you have been present or just even, you know, reaching out to ask questions to myself and to parents in our community as to ask what the needs are. So as I go into the presentation, some of the outcomes that I wanted to present are that we have been able to maintain and increase partnerships with various organizations and agencies in Mundeline and Lake County to bring support and opportunities to our students and their families here in District 76. We have continued collaboration with all of our District 76 staff. So not only the teachers, administrators, but also our learning associates that reach out to help identify students and their families for me to be able to follow up and be able to provide those free resources and supports. Improved collaboration with parents for community events with all stakeholders, provided volunteer opportunities for staff and students to promote service to others, and still assist district-wide communications and presentation translations for transparency to our families. Just wanted to also list some of the established part, or sorry, yeah, yes. Some of the established partnerships that, that we've been able to do is, you can see here, are listed Northern Illinois Food Bank. So we host monthly mobile food banks for all of our families and community members in partnership with the high school in District 75. We have relationships with the parent coordinators at 73, 75, and 120 High Schools Black Student Union, which we've been able to start our own BSU here, the Chapel Mundeline, who is amazing and provides this great support as well. Mundeline Park District, the Police Department, College of Lake County, who we partner tremendously with, Mano a Mano, the Lake County Sheriff's Office, Mundeline United, which is a leadership group in which there are various Mundeline and Lake County leaders that come together to share what efforts everybody's doing within their own spaces to create equitable spaces for the community. So I'm able to share what we're doing here at District 76. Still have the Welcome Center available, Operation Warm, which provides free coats when we have our coat drives as well. And then just various Lake County organizations and agencies such as Mother's Trust Fund and then a safe place where I've referred parents to for mental health services. So then also listed here, just some projects and initiatives that I've done. In the beginning of the year, I send out a student needs form to all of our families. And then this pretty much allows me to gauge what the needs are at home if needed. Questions on that survey range from, do you need free school supplies, food, clothing, hygiene products, et cetera? And then again, just allowing for that accountability and follow-up and then building those relationships with that parents, with those parents, because then it kind of opens that line of communication and then they know who to reach out to for support. And whether that's me connecting them with a social worker, me connecting them with, you know, the principals, it really just opens that line of communication. And then throughout the school year for our staff, I have the staff referral form. And, you know, our, our staff, if they see anything in the classroom, if a student mentions something that's needed at home or that's going on at home, you know, we kind of work together to gauge and provide resources, whether it's a change of clothes, backpacks, school supplies, et cetera. And I know our teachers really appreciate that. And I appreciate that because they go above and beyond. They're really paying attention holistically to that student. School supplies, coat drives, Thanksgiving drives, the holiday drives, monthly food pantries, we're able, the boxes range from 250 to 400 food boxes at each event. We've allowed for our bilingual parent advisory committee, the virtual summit where we allow, where we present parent education nights. And we've brought in agencies such as North Shore Legal Aid to talk about immigration, also addressing mental health and then family empowerment. I've assisted with our parent universities, partnered with some of our teachers to promote literacy, mental health, and supporting and promoting diversity, equity, inclusion. I did a presentation on that with our social worker as well. Mundeline Lunch Program. And then the high school has a summer camp, which I've referred and helped some of our families get scholarships so that students are active over the summer and have exposure to, to sports and activities that they otherwise wouldn't. Then continuous work with the SEL Committee and then Mundeline United Leadership Group. And then here is just data. I sent out a survey to our staff. Have you used our community liaison? We have 37 responses, 62% have used it. And as you can see, you know, if yes, how outside resources, so referrals to, for housing, counseling, immigration services, interpretation, translation services, student participation, food, clothing, school supplies, volunteer opportunities. And then just continued from that, was it helpful, yes or no? 100% said yes. And I just kind of included some comments from our staff that was really nice to read because when you're always on the go, you don't really see all of the, all of, you know, just the thankfulness. So it was really nice to see that in, in the survey data as well. So just included that there for you. And we also surveyed our parents. Have you used our community liaison, yes or no? And then you could see the majority of it is for interpretation services, food or clothing, outside resources, school supplies. So that is just continuous work as well. And then all right, my future focus, Eric, is to continue to building those relationships with community partners and school districts to bring support and resources to D76. Recently, we've seen, or I've definitely met a lot of parents that are new to our country from Ukraine, from Colombia, from Ecuador, from Mexico. So working with them and utilizing the resources that we have for free for these families, they really appreciate it. So continue building those relationships so that our families have that support. Continuing professional development, opportunities to stay informed about issues that impact our family, that may impact our families and our students. Maintain the relationships and communication with all staff to provide the support and outreach to that, those identified students and their families. Again, just working with all of our principals, meeting with them monthly, just to, for the transparency, in case there's any new students that I should be aware of that need that support. And then working with all of our teachers and social workers. And then providing relevant educational presentations to our parents to help support them and their students as they navigate the education system. Continue assisting district-wide communications and presentations, and then continue to safely creating and supporting community events that promote our mission, vision, and goals for our school district. And that is all I have. If you have any questions or comments or feedback.
I just want to share one of the things that due to Daisy's efforts and all that she's been doing to reaching out to the community on behalf of our district and behalf of our families that we were, she was contacted over the weekend to kind of talk about what we've done for our back to, for back to school and how to like make families feel welcome, make sure they have the resources that they need. So she was speaking and please share the radio station you were on, but you had shared some great pictures and some great information about a half an hour interview of what District 76 does to welcome families back to school and make sure that they have the support and the resources they need to have a successful transition back into school.
Yeah, so we were finishing our school supply drive Friday night and I received an email from somebody from a radio station called Unión Latina, which is a radio station based out of Lake County. They just provide updates to, you know, what's going on within the Latino community here in Lake County. And they have a segment Saturday mornings from nine to 10. It's called, in Spanish, it's por nuestros hijos, for our kids. And they reached out to me to come to talk about District 76, the initiatives that we've done, projects, things that we're doing to support our families here with, within D76. And yeah, I went, 30 minutes and definitely just shared everything. And some of our parents were listening and I've heard great feedbacks. I was grateful for that platform as well, that we were able to share that out and that they even reached out to do a segment like that. So yeah, those efforts are still there.
I just want to say on behalf of the board, thank you for all the work that you've done in this area. I visited the Welcome Center earlier this year and was so impressed with how well it was run and so impressed with everything that was being done to serve families. And I've had the opportunity to volunteer at some of the food drives too. And I was so impressed with how involved our staff is. So it's great to see how everything you're doing is kind of trickled out and has really turned into, you know, a great support system for our entire district. Yeah, so thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I definitely talked about the board support too during that radio segment. I'm like, it's a collaborative effort. And, you know, without the board support, without our admin present as well, you know, it trickles down to our students and how we're helping those families. And yes, Jo, you have, you've gone over to the Welcome Center and like I said, meeting with those families that are new to the country, like meeting them at from residency fair and then actually going to the Welcome Center and just being so grateful. And they're like, this is like a really good day for me because everything for them is free. So just having the ability to be able to continue to run things like that. So thank you.
Thank you, Daisy.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Both those presentations were great start to our board meeting. And now we will turn over to the business agenda. It's a little less exciting, maybe. The first item is just for review, which is the Anubis Vote Agenda, and we will be voting on that at our next meeting. The next item for action is the press policies change. So Lisa had noted on kind of the memo that we have that there are three questions that we actually need to, to take a look at and answer. Actually, there's four total, but there's three within, there's three separate policies that have questions. So we need to discuss those and then vote on the policies if there isn't any further discussion on the policies in general. I'm assuming there's not. Is that correct? Okay, then we want to just take a look at policy two, colon, 230, which is public participation at school board meetings and partitions to the board, which is essentially asking us if we'd like to establish a maximum time limit for public participation. And the default answer is no. Our current policies have like a per-person time limit. So we do have, we do have that in place already, but this would be adding addition to that. So this would be letting us choose if we wanted to, to not establish a time limit, to establish a time limit of 60 minutes, or to select our own specific time limit. So does anyone have any thoughts they would want to share on that? I think I think that's what I, it's either three or five minutes. I will pull it up so I can clarify. It's, I will say that in past experience, I don't recall ever cutting, us having to cut anyone off. And also, I think that three to, like that amount of time is a reasonable amount of time for an individual to speak, but but I don't know if we want to actually create a limit. We don't tend to have very many public comments. And I will say that typically, when we do have them, it's on an issue that I think it's important that we hear community members' voice and get parental input. So I don't know, you know, I don't know that it would be worthwhile to make a limit, but that would just be my opinion.
We can always set too, if we see a larger audience, we can, at the beginning of the meeting, we can say in order to, you know, accommodate everyone, we're going to, you know, limit public comments to three minutes or five minutes or whatever, not to exceed. So we can make those at the very beginning, like as a special clause.
What is, John? Could you read what John wrote?
Yeah. Mr. Hartman says, I agree with Joy. No overall limit is needed.
We do that, that current policy. Yeah, I'm not seeing a time limit. So I don't know if that changed. We'll have to go back and confirm that. Okay. Okay, so does anyone have any other thoughts on that? Okay, so then it sounds like the consensus we have is no, we don't want to establish a time limit there, which is the default. Okay, great. The next policy is five, colon, 80, which is on court duty. The first question is, the school code mandates is provision for certificated or licensed employees serving witness duty. Despite the statute's limitation to licensed employees, many board, many boards apply this language to educational support personnel. Would the board like to apply this language to both licensed and educational support personnel? No is the default. And then yes would be striking licensed from that. And then the related question is, the school code mandates is provision for certificated, licensed employees serving jury duty. In contrast, the jury act requires that employers give employee time off from employment for jury duty, but does not require that employers pay the employee while in jury duty despite the statute's limitation to licensed employees. Many boards apply this language to educational support personnel. Would we want to apply this language to both? So I think those questions kind of go hand in hand. Does anyone have any comments either way? Very many. Three. Yeah.
Something this is for peer professionals and not for like the office associates. Is there around salary?
Yes.
For peer professionals, right?
Yes. I had a question, and this is just a procedural question, but I'm assuming we pay our, you know, our teachers for jury duty. Do we? Do we require them to reimburse us the money they get paid from the county? Yeah, which is like five dollars. So. Yeah. Yeah, I just wasn't sure of what the, what our current policy was. I mean, I would be in favor of extending it. Okay, so then we're going to answer yes to both of those questions. And then the last question, I believe the answer already is yes to this. We have adopted policy seven, two, seven. So, we don't need to vote on that. Okay. So, now we will actually go ahead and vote. Unless anyone has any further questions or discussions. So, okay. Whereas policy creation and updates and changes to adopted policies are provided for District Seventy Six. Through the subscription to the Policy Reference Educational Subscription Service, Press. Through the Illinois Association of School Boards, IASB. And whereas the Policy Committee reviewed the policies and a first reading of the policies was held at the July twelfth, twenty twenty-two combined board meeting. Therefore, be it resolved, the Diamond Lake School District Seventy Six Board of Education moves to approve the policy changes as presented and reviewed in IASB Press Issue one oh nine. So, that would be Policy Number Two, two thirty. Policy, which is public participation at school board meetings and petitions to the board. Policy Three, colon, seventy, succession of authority. Policy Four, colon, seventy, resource conservation. Policy Five, colon, seventy, religious holidays. Policy Five, colon, eighty, court duty. Policy Five, colon, one hundred and ten, recognition for service. Policy Five, colon, one forty, solicitations by or from staff. Policy Five, colon, two forty, suspension. Policy Six, colon, eighty, teaching about controversial issues. Policy Six, colon, one hundred and forty, education of homeless children. Policy Six, colon, two ninety, homework. Policy Six, colon, three hundred and thirty, achievement and awards. Policy Seven, colon, fifteen, student family privacy rights. Policy Seven, colon, two hundred and seventy, administering medicines to students. Policy Seven, colon, two hundred and eighty-five, anaphylaxis prevention, response, and management program. And that is it. May I have a motion to approve those policy changes? Yes. Okay, that motion has passed. Moving on to our next item, which is student meal prices. Eric, I didn't know if you wanted to say anything about this.
Yeah, just a procedural move. This is mostly due to if anybody wants to get a secondary meal or an adult meal. So, it's, every kid's still gonna eat free breakfast and lunch this year. It's something that we're going to be evaluating very closely, just to make sure the reimbursement levels line up to what our expected costs are. So, right now, we're expected to have a cost neutral approach this upcoming year. But as a first year on the program, we've had a different program pretty much every year since I've been here. So, we're excited for the opportunity.
That's great. Do you families know that breakfast and lunch is going to still continue to be free?
I believe so. That has been in a couple communications. I believe it's on our website.
Okay, I just ask because I know that there, I heard a lot of talk in the community over the summer. Because the, the federal program that kind of universally expanded that to all families and was not, you know, continued. It ended in July. And so, a lot of families, I had heard were asking, not necessarily our district residents, but just families among the line had been asking. So, I just wanted to make sure that people were aware that, that breakfast and lunch would still continue to be free.
Well, that's a really good feedback because most districts in the area are not going to be going back. But it's, it's a nice thing we're able to offer, and that's really just because we're able to partner chart well and reduce our costs by, I think it was like forty percent that we. You know, for our meal cost. So, yeah, maybe I'll work with Mr. Hanson, just make sure we get the communication out before school starts.
Okay, that's great. Thank you for the clarification. Hey, did anyone have any questions? Okay, then, then we will move forward to approve this. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake School District Seventy Six Board of Education approves the following meal rates for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Breakfast, no charge. Lunch, three dollars and twenty-five cents, full price, forty cents, reduced price, milk, thirty cents. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes. That motion is approved. Moving on to personnel. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake School District Seventy Six Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. We have seven new hires. We have two resignations and we have one leave of absence. Bless you. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes. Okay, and that concludes our business agenda for the evening. The next thing we will move on to is electing a new board secretary. As ever, as I stated earlier, since Margaret Kwan has resigned, we have a position open. I'm now going to call for nominations. And if only one person is nominated, then we can cast a unanimous vote. So, I would like to nominate Elisa Bayless. Do we have any further nomination? Okay, all in favor? I, Elisa, congratulations. Thank you for sir. Okay, fantastic. Now, I'm moving on to board discussion.
So, there's two items in board discussion, and one of them has some attachments. The first one, I believe I shared this back in June, but when I knew that everybody was kind of coming back in July. We were going to talk, excuse me, in August, we would talk about this. So, we have a community member. This is Elise Hauptman that reached out to me and kind of shared some information. So, I've just kind of put together, and then she and I met after, just kind of talked a little bit about this. So, I've kind of just pulled together the resources that she shared and kind of talking about some of the things that have happened, you know, in our country recently. And just if there's something that the board wants to pursue as far as just sending out. Now that we're taking a stance, it's just informational of, you know, as we've put together our back to school items, and I've written down a couple of things of, you know. Announcing that breakfast and lunch are going to be still provided for free. Here are some things to keep, you know, safe, safety. So, it'll be coming from the district and from our schools of just safe gun storage. So, I just wanted to share that with the board and see if this is something you would be in favor of supporting that I continue with or that we not. So, it's just open for discussion. And I don't know if Mr. Hauptman, Eric, did you watch that to see if he has any comments?
He's typing. I'm, I'm sure, I was gonna say, I think that this is something that the board pretty universally supports. Especially in light of recent events, but also we have had, I know that in the past, West Oak has, has like hosted a Be Smart Program, which was very useful. And I think more information is always better than less. And it's great just to make people aware of resources that are available to them. And just remind them that even though they may think their kids aren't watching or aren't aware, they actually are. So, I think this would be fantastic to include. I was gonna say, I saw Pete Hannigan from District Seventy Three. I saw him send out a letter to his community. So, I think there's probably a number of, of resources out there we could look at too, if we wanted additional information.
Sure.
Mr. Hauptman did have a comment.
Great. Would you mind reading that?
No problem. As you can imagine, I'm in favor of it. Sending safe storage information is a great service.
Fantastic. And I, I believe in addition to the email from Elise, we also got at least one other community member asking us to provide this information too. So, literally the community is in favor of that. So, I think that would be a great thing to add.
All right, thank you. And then our second item, we were just approached, actually Daisy was, from the University Center. A few days ago about participating in a grant along with Round Lake District one sixteen. And I want to make sure I say it correctly because it's a long. Title. It is called the Full Service Community School Grant. And there's been some information that's been shared with Daisy that I'm going to ask her to speak about. And then she, Eric and I have been talking about just the logistics of it. And we need board participation to complete the survey on behalf of the community. And then we're going to reach out to BPAC and I believe our district leadership team, as well as our professional advisory council. And some other stakeholders, if this, if the board feels it's appropriate to do. So, we're going to get your feedback on some projects that we could be doing in the next several years and the amount of money that we need to spend. So, Daisy, would you speak on that? And then Eric, feel free to comment, please.
Yeah, so basically the University Center reached out about a grant opportunity. They were able to select two schools in Lake County to partner with. They selected Diamond Lake and Round Lake Schools. So, and it's pretty much to help expand programs that we have. But so, kind of like our SEL, our SEL program, supporting our students' transitions to higher grade levels, getting into high school, higher education. Health, nutrition, mental health. So, we have all of those programs, but how could we expand on them and better them? So, it's just a big grant opportunity, but the next steps would be, obviously, they just need community, they want community needs assessment. So, I've been talking to our BPAC parents about it. So, we just need to send a survey out to staff members, community members, parents. And then a focus group as well to get feedback. There's already kind of like a guideline discussion that we're going to have with people that attend. But they just need feedback on, yeah, community needs and how we can expand on the programs that we have already in place. But it sounds like a great opportunity for us.
And one other thing was the early childhood program.
Yeah, so it would be, yeah, high quality, early childhood programs. Support for child's transitions from, you know, elementary school to middle school, family and community engagement supports. Social health, nutrition, mental health services and supports.
That's great, because I think it's very aligned with what we're doing to be able to have like additional support to expand those programs.
Okay, yeah, if you're okay with that, I'll send you the survey then either tonight or tomorrow at some point. Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Daisy, did you review the, what the potential grant is for, with the amount?
No, but if you would like to.
Yeah, so that, that's the part that sometimes you get these grant opportunities, and it's like, all right, ten thousand dollars for a hundred and eighty page grant. I'll do the value, what if it's worth it? It's worth up to one to two million dollars per year for a five-year period. So, it's a potential. So, it's a potential five to ten million dollars. The allocation between us and Round Lake is to be determined at this point. So, once the needs assessments are done, then we kind of look at projects. But just based on that sheer dollar amount, there's going to be, you know, hopefully some focus on whether it's staff hiring, some construction-related initiatives, things like that. So, it is a tremendous opportunity.
Yeah, that's, that's impactful money.
Yeah, so. They saw this grant opportunity and we've partnered with them on the Taste of College. I know she mentioned that. And the fact that we've also done our BPAC, we brought them in, you know, to basically support higher education for our students. So, part of it is kind of, you know, collecting that data. Has it, has it been impactful, the presentations that we've done together? But yeah, really, they, they had the opportunity to select any schools in Lake County. She said normally, and her name is Mydagai Thun, she's the executive director at the University Center. We definitely worked with them before. She was like, we could have gone to North Chicago, Waukegan School. She was like, but I wanted to stay, you know, kind of go west. She was like, and we thought of other high needs areas. So, she had asked if it was something I'd be interested in. Or if our school district would be interested in. So, that's why I kind of brought it, you know, over to the board. But it would be, you know, just expanding on the programs that we have, continuing that partnership with them to promote higher education for our students.
And one of the things that I think is really beneficial and is unique to this grant is that they've hired a grant writer. So, once they collect our needs assessment from both of our districts, they'll sit down with us and help us put together a plan and write the grant. So that those dollars can be allocated, but also gotten and received. I think that will be really helpful, as opposed to us writing this hundred and eighty page grant, what we think we need and what, you know, we deserve. They'll be able to write it in the way that people reading it will be able to allocate them those dollars.
Yeah, the, the survey and the focus group that I want to have next week, it would just be, you know, justification behind it, and it's like the need is there. But again, that input, what can we expand on? And then, yeah, just working closely with the board and administration later, if we were to get it, on how we would implement that, how to allocate those ones.
We'll get those surveys out to you, let's just say tomorrow. Get that survey out so that we can just make sure that we have everybody aligned with who we're sending it to. Thank you, Daisy. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you. Okay, so then we also have the board meeting calendar. One of the things I wanted just to point out, which isn't on there, but just to get back on the board's radar, is that we do have that DEI training scheduled with IASB. On September thirteenth. So, if for some reason your schedule has changed, please let me know because we could reschedule with them. But I just wanted, you know, time has flown. And so, since that's actually coming up, I thought I'd remind everybody. Also, we do have the seat all twenty twenty-two, twenty-three board meeting dates. John, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I didn't know if you were available for that August twenty-fourth meeting or not. If you could either let me know now or just follow up with us, that would be great, or we could find another willing volunteer. He said yes. Okay, awesome. Thank you. And then the rest of the dates are listed and we can revisit whether, you know, John wants to continue being a representative, which is awesome. Or if someone else wants to go instead or with him, that would be great too. And that kind of wraps up notices and communication or board discussion. Oh, no, you know what? I skipped over the FOIA's, but we didn't have any. So, that wraps up FOIA, hand notices and communications. Now, we will wrap up with public comments and petitions on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comments or petitions on non-agenda items this evening? And again, if you're joining us virtually, please feel free to type those in the chat box, and Eric will read them into the meeting for us. Okay, it does not look like we have any. Is that correct? Okay, great. Then moving on to others, do we have any others this evening? I think we had not set that with them yet. Hold on, let me just pull up my last email with them. And I believe we were talking about having. Like a similar time to the board meeting and having dinner, basically. Let me scroll through really fast.
Probably said six. I put it down in my calendar. Lisa, do you mind adding that to the board calendar, the nine thirteen?
Yeah, I don't have a specific time. So, if six works for everybody, I will just, I will, I was going to re, visit this with them this week. And I will follow up and let them know, like, we're thinking six o'clock.
Actually, I put forty-seven. I mean, I blacked out forty-eight.
Other jobs that we have to do first that pay us, and then we can come join you.
Yeah, I just blacked out the whole. Yeah, that's, whatever time you want, and we can take care of dinner.
Yeah, so probably, you know, I would think six o'clock is usually a pretty safe time for most people. But, but we can, I will follow up with an email, and if people have input or would prefer a different time, just let me know. You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, if there are no other others, then we will move on to executive session. For the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district. Or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employer, against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity. And for the discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed, whether for purposes of approval by the body of minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes. As mandated by Section two point oh six. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session, please?